At this time, we are going to open the public hearing on the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten dash one. These are resuming ordinance. And I don't think we have anyone here deciding anything, but hearings are really close to public hearing and three open. I do have to add something that I'm just gonna read to you. It takes longer than it sometimes.
I'm being more facetious.
I know. Dave, did you have to pull somebody out?
Yeah, I don't know. Broke down big truck. Down there for a while else.
Okay.
Doesn't silly people make you stay? Do you have to go over?
Tennessee barbecue this afternoon. No cow, but we saw another cow. And said that somebody tried to fire.
They went over to the plant.
All right.
They want to be downloaded. That's all I know.
It was with Grant Davis. He got a nut or what over on the side. Didn't turn over. Same guy. No, it's pushed. Well, I heard that there's some lines. There's a little narrow road down to the water line down there. He got the light and then. So he's going down that one. That's right.
I guess congratulations are over.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order at this time. If we have. James Sheeho is here to open us in prayer.
Let's bow our heads. Gracious God, we thank you for your blessings on our town. And we pray that you would give wisdom to our leaders. With following behind us and Christmas coming, we pray that you would bless our town during the holidays. That we would attract more investment and more people to our little town. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna do roll call. Just remember to hit your mic when you're speaking so that everybody can hear in the ring. Trust me, David. Alderman Elder.
Down here.
Alderman Langford.
Here.
Alderman Lender.
Here.
Alderman Crawford.
Here.
Alderman Riegel.
Here.
Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Lender. Code second.
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Crawford. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open it up for public comments. I don't think we have anyone for public comments, so we're gonna move on down to additions and deletions to the agenda. And I do have one addition to add resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven dash one to the agenda regarding the Tennessee municipal bond fund. Did I have a motion to add that as number five under new business?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Lender to add this, code second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Langford. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, under old business, we have ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten dash one. It's a resuming ordinance of the Mason Hammer property. And this is the second reading. And basically wanting to change from commercial to residential property on at six oh one North Church Street was formerly a residence. Do I have a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have another. A motion on the table. Alderman Elder and a second by Alderman Langford. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, let's move on down to some new business. We have, who's going first? Zach Stevens. We have Zach Stevens from the Chamber of Commerce for an update and Gene Gant also for Main Street Historic Business. Okay, so get Zach up first.
I think we're gonna tag tape this. Gene, Gene Gant, everyone. So we have a lot of exciting events coming up. I think that's what, the what?
teaching channel.
We have a lot of exciting events coming up with Christmas time just around the corner. Gene's gonna share some details about Christmas in the country. It's gonna be on Black Friday, the first Friday of December. And then we're moving our third kind of day to write for the Christmas parade on December thirteenth to try and get some more folks up there on the square. We're also be having our Christmas parade on that second Saturday, thirteenth at four P M. in the evening like it was last year. So we're excited about that. It's actually the sixtieth anniversary of our Livingston and Oldham County Christmas Parade. So the theme is a nineteen sixties Christmas. So I hope every single one of you has to build a float and dress in your sixties attire. Also, I'm gonna pass out, the Chamber is hosting a special business after hours. Appreciate Main Street for sponsoring this. It's gonna be a legislative session preview with our state senator Ken Hager and our state representative Ed Butler. We're gonna hear from them on a few issues, but specifically about the renewal or extension of the courthouse revitalization act, which has helped fund Main Street for since two thousand six or eight. So it's really important that we continue that. We're working on some other advocacy things, hopefully in Nashville come January whenever session kicks off. But I hope all of you can attend that and really stress to those guys how important this is and whatnot. I'm gonna also hit on something that's affecting the courthouse. The county is gonna be applying for a five hundred thou- up to five hundred thousand dollar grant for a courthouse. They're gonna be the applicant. I wanna share with you all because our courthouse is so important. There's some deterioration happening around the doors and windows, some soffits and brick and things like that. So we're actually applying for that on Friday. I have everything in and we're hopeful that we will get the full five hundred thousand. I'll keep you all abreast of that. Is there something else that the courthouse wants to hear?
It's almost done. He took most of my stuff. Yeah, courthouse is also complete as y'all have seen. I think the finishing touches are being added to it at this point. And we hope to put together a ribbon cutting for noon on November twenty-first. Once we get that finalized, we'll let everybody know for sure. But that's our tentative plan right now. We'll see the invitation, yes.
Thank you.
As Zach mentioned, the first night of Christmas in the country is twenty eighth, which is on Friday. That night will also light the Christmas tree that seeks. And then Santa will be there. Ice skating will open up for the first time. And the Christmas trees that we had last year that dotted around the courthouse square will not be on courthouse square this year because the turf is too tender for us to do it up there. Want to keep the traffic off of it for a while. So they'll be down at the park along with the ice skating. So that should create quite a pretty atmosphere down there, we say, with the Christmas trees. I think we have over thirty Christmas trees this year that folks in the community have purchased and wanted to decorate. And there'll be little contests for that. The next night of Christmas in the country is December the fifth. There'll be activities on the square as usual. Santa will be there again and then ice skating in the park as well along with those Christmas trees. Giant snowman, other things that we have planned as well. And then on December thirteenth is the parade and the skating, of course, will go on all day that day. And that will, again, we're trying to bring people up to the square to enjoy what we've got and the decorations we're gonna have. So that's all of that. And then on projects, as I said, courthouse, as y'all seen, is almost finished. And the city has chosen A S A Engineering to negotiate with for the middle and cedar project. And I understand from Ray that we'll bring a contract at the December meeting. A S A is a Chattanooga-based firm that has also a presence in Cookeville. So that's all I have, unless I forgot. Thank you.
I'm gonna say the courthouse does look nice. You guys done a great job.
I'd like to thank the whole committee for doing what you've done, Gene. Freaking awesome.
God, thank you.
I appreciate the work that Midstate's done up there. It's really, it's really nice. I think it's a great job.
I thank you. Y'all know that that courthouse project predates me quite a bit. But there've been a lot of people involved in it. It's something that we are all proud of. And I think, you know, it finally getting done is a real step in the south course. This would be my, thank you, little power.
Gene?
Yes, sir.
Do we know how many people attended following?
A million.
It was unbelievable.
It was. I don't know, but you got any data on that?
We want those for probably three more weeks.
Yeah, we'll know in a few weeks. We'll be able to take that by the December meeting. I personally have been to following for many years. This was absolutely the biggest one we ever had. Never seen anything like it.
And at least next year, we'll have where we can get on the square and reduce it some. I don't, most of y'all probably weren't there, but they were in line an hour and a half to start walking down Spring Street. That's how many people were there.
Yeah, it was really crowded and it was perfect weather that day. I mean, it couldn't have been any better. So that brought in a lot more people, I believe. But it went really well. I mean, there were some people that complained a little about having to wait so long, but there were others that said that it was great and they admired the way. So they were happy with it. Anything else? Thank you.
What about the courthouse lawn during Christmas in the country? We're gonna start walking down here, it's gonna be very fragile.
Yeah, we're gonna put some signs around, stay up, please stay up there at signs. We know there'll be some probably. But we're gonna do our best to route people off of that. The biggest thing is we'll have to put the Christmas tree on the west side of the square this year opposite from where it was before. And so during that time, as you know, people try to gather, so we'll try our best to keep them off the grass.
Thank you, Gene and Zach, for the update. Okay, next on the agenda, we do have a personnel policy that has been updated. We had a work session to discuss everything and kind of work through a few, a few things. And so at this time, unless anyone has some more discussion to do about the personnel policy, I would entertain a motion to pass the personnel policy with, we have a few changes that we would want to do. What?
We need to talk about the changes.
Okay.
So let's just sort of, sort of look at each.
Okay.
Were you meant that?
Well, Phil, did you make more points on what we're gonna change along?
I'm gonna put page numbers on it.
Yes, okay. Alright, so we are need to page numbers on it. And then we are going to change the aderent pay from eight weeks to two weeks. What?
Put in a definition for qualified employee.
Yes, put in a definition for qualified employee and under the, that is in the personal relationship policy, we were gonna put between employees and supervisors, we're gonna change that.
Why don't you say eight weeks to ten weeks and then just.
So if we have someone that is out before, what we had on this aderent pay, an employee who, we did have all employees who are assigned temporary work. Yes, yes. All employees who are assigned temporary work in a higher classification may receive additional compensation for any period in excess of eight weeks retroactive to the date of the appointment. We changed that to two weeks because if you're being the supervisor for somebody for two months because they're out sick, that's kind of a long time to take on additional duties and not, you know, not be compensated for that time. So we changed it to two weeks instead of eight weeks. Like your third week, if you were acting supervisor, you could be compensated extra.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So it's not supervisor, it's a man that's taking his place, so he'll get supervisor pay or?
Right, if you're feeling him or then after, after changes. And then Andre, I think you were gonna look at the verbiage on the.
Right, we haven't done that yet, so we're just going with the version now. We'll have some tweaks to that next, next time.
Okay. Alright, so I will entertain a motion to adopt the new personnel policy and procedures with the changes that we made tonight. But next time, we'll also need to.
Sorry, if you need by resolution or ordinance. Phil, do you know if the personnel? Okay. Then scratch that, it's fine.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. So I need, so I need a motion to accept the policy and procedure manual.
I'll make the motion we have settled. We have the changes.
So I have a motion on the table to accept this version with the changes that are gonna be made that we discussed just now. Alderman Elder, do I have a second?
Say it.
Have a second by Alderman Lender. And let's do a roll call, please. Alderman Elder.
Yes.
Alderman Munder.
Yes.
Alderman Lender.
Yes.
Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Alderman Riegel.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, we're gonna talk about. Yes.
Sure.
Airport, all these.
You may recall this airport project. We had to condemn some land to expand the width of the runway so that it can serve as larger aircraft. All of those acquisitions have been made. We are in litigation with two gentlemen. One's name is Gregory Boar. We couldn't quite agree on the value of the land that was acquired from him. But we did recently get a grant amendment and were able to offer him substantially more than we could before. So I don't know his answer to that offer that we made him, but I'm optimistic that he'll accept it. We'll be able to resolve that soon. The second gentleman is a man named Tim Cook. He has an oil lease on Gregory Boar's land. And the airports had to put up a perimeter fence. And the way this oil well and pump is situated is there's a oil tank that comes out of the ground about ten or fifteen feet. And it sits on the airport side of the fence. And then the pump hose goes underground and attaches to the pump somewhere else on the property that we haven't acquired. That oil lease either needs to be abandoned and capped or needs to be purchased from Mr. Cook. Or we can just allow it to stay as it is and provide Mr. Cook with access. We had an appraisal done on both the Boar track, which is how we got the grant amendment to be able to offer more money. And they also specifically appraised value of that oil lease that Mr. Cook owns. The appraisal came back and said it was basically worth zero dollars. I was able to offer him some money from our grant, I hope will be reimbursed. We were nowhere even close. He's demanding fifty-five thousand dollars for this oil lease that our appraisal says is worthless. And the councilors are vote on that because anything in excess of our appraisal is not gonna be covered by a grant. So this will be money out of the city's pocket every dime. So we need to vote tonight on whether you want to pay Mr. Cook fifty-five thousand dollars for this oil lease.
What happens if we just layer it like it is?
Well, so we have eminent domain proceedings currently pending, so those will just continue. And if we can't come to an agreement and it's not resolved, then we'll have to have a trial over what the value of the oil lease is.
So he will attempt to sue the city and we'll be in litigation and he will have lawsuit against us, I guess.
Well, we're in litigation now. So the city sued these people back more than a year ago now because we couldn't agree with them on the price of what we were requiring. So we were forced to file lawsuits against, I guess, select few. These are the only ones that are still pending. We're so far apart on the oil lease that if you choose not to give him the fifty-five thousand dollars tonight, then, you know, I don't see this resolving anyway other than a trial. I don't think we can do that.
If we give him access to his tank and to his oil, and never mind, do we have to do anything?
You know, not that I'm aware of, but there are a ton of really complicated F A A rules that I'm not sure about. So we have several consultants and somebody with T doc who are very knowledgeable and are already on this. So that's something that we can ask. I know I've raised that possibility before and I think that still remains a possibility.
If he gets into his oil, is he satisfied?
No, I think you would rather have fifty-five thousand dollars, but as far as I know, the, the well is not productive and it hasn't been for several years.
So the, the well was dead?
More or less.
Is your oil in the tank?
I, I don't believe so, but I haven't seen it for myself.
Cause that would be a problem with that.
Yeah, environmental contaminants are concerned, but the tank has obviously been there for thirty plus years.
So it's not on the, used on the day basis?
Not even close.
So we need a motion on the table to act one way or the other to pay Mr. Cook fifty-five thousand dollars for an oil lease that has basically zero value. Or to see what the next step is.
And I should very quickly tell you Mr. Cook's side of the story. He's brought up several times that it's not just the value of the mineral rights, it's the, the infrastructure, the cost of the tank, the underground, the connectivity, the pumps. He says there's some value in that, obviously, well, I don't think he even put the pump in, but somebody had to spend money with that stuff. That's, that's his position.
So I would need a motion. The only motion to be made here would be to. If the only motion to be made would be to, uh, vote to pay him that money.
Or, I mean, you can have a motion to accept the offer and deny it or reject the offer.
I make a motion to reject the offer. I'll say it.
Okay, so we had a motion, um, on the table by Alderman Proctor to reject, um, the offer to Tim Cook for fifty-five thousand dollars and a second, um, by Alderman Linder. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do a roll call, okay.
Alderman Muncher?
Vote to reject, however I need to vote.
Alderman Linder?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderman Riddle?
Yes.
Alderman Elder?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thanks, Andre. Okay, next on the agenda, we have, um, Kelly Coleman, uh, to speak on clarification of sign ordinances, et cetera.
Kelly Coleman, um. First, I'll look at this. Well, I know that none of you wanna hear about signs, right? We've talked, y'all talked about signs, I talked about signs years ago when I was on in your shoes. However, I wanted to share a few thoughts that I had, that I had related to the ordinance, which may either be unclear or perhaps some misunderstandings by those who keep submitting permits to the city for flashing or portable signs. Let me be clear, I'm not here to advocate what signs you, you all include in your ordinance, what kind of signs you exclude. I'm not showing, my personal opinion has nothing to do with a flashing sign or a stationary sign, a portable sign, et cetera. I'm here because I'm concerned about the costs. And I wanna explain, the cost to the taxpayers. I'm not sure that the full council, the public, uh, for that matter, has a grasp on the extent, uh, to what is possibly an ongoing problem, uh, that's costing all of us a significant amount of money, okay? Legal fees. When I was on the city council, uh, we were sued, involved in multiple lawsuits at the time, uh, over bill wars. Those cases went for a long time and there were significant legal bills that had to be paid in the city's defense. Ultimately, the city won the cases, but at a cost. Apparently, we, the city, has ongoing issues, as I said, with the ordinances. When I read the paper a few weeks ago that there was gonna be a public hearing of the BCA, um, Board of Telling Appeals to discuss recent sign matters, I wanted to attend just out of curiosity to see what the current issues might, might be. So I came to the first meeting a few weeks ago and just sat and observed, and it was clear that either there's, again, this misunderstanding or unclear, still some unclar, not, you know, unclarity about some of the, uh, codes. A couple of different parties presented their case. Ultimately, the Board of Telling Appeals upheld the decision that the code enforcement officer had, you know, used to deny the sign permits. Again, uh, you know, I, I left a week or two later, I saw another advertisement in the paper for an additional BCA meeting, hearing, uh, related to signs. So I came back to that meeting. One of the same parties was at this meeting that had presented at the first meeting. This party had been denied eight permit applications by the, uh, at the time, code enforcement officer Walter. Um, at the first meeting, this party had an attorney from Atlanta speak on their behalf. At the second BCA meeting, this party had another attorney speak on their behalf to explain why they felt that the denial was unreasonable. Why they had been wrongly denied. Our, the city's attorney again got up and spoke and explained why the, the city's position was correct and that the denial was, uh, made within reason. And then again, the Board of Telling Appeals voted unanimously to uphold the decision that the, uh, code enforcement officer made. Both of those cases, I wanna point out, have to do, had to do with flashing signs, okay? Needless to say, the party who presented at both meetings was expressly very disappointed in the decision. My concern again, as RB, is that the city's likely going to face another expensive lawsuit that perhaps may have been avoided if the ordinance were clearer. The party's attorney mentioned that the manufacturer's name that, uh, may be incorrect, but I believe they mentioned in their permit that the attorney speaking on their behalf did mention this particular manufacturer and, and I just passed it out, it's Watchfire, correct? So I looked it up and I, I want, I was curious what type of sign that is. That's basically what I pulled off the website. Again, I'm not sure, uh, but it seems to me that these lawsuits are based on maybe an incorrect interpretation of the city's specific ordinance, uh, related to, again, the flashing sign. Because when I read the city's ordinance specific to the definition of flashing, flashing signs, as I'm sure you're all aware, it says that, uh, flashing sign is a directly or indirectly illuminated sign of which artificial light is not maintained stationary, constant, and intensive in color at all times in use. Now, you can think about that in relation to what these signs do, they're constantly flashing on and off messages, right? We see them in, some have been grandfathered in, in our town and in other towns. I simply am a believer that incorporating examples into the ordinance may be helpful in clarifying that, that definition, okay? So if you read that definition, well, perhaps you could amend the ordinance, strengthen the ordinance, make it more clear by stating, for example, name, I watch, Watchfire, as an example, and maybe list other manufacturer of signs that have similar type of signs. You know, if it's unclear, maybe that helps to clear it up, list examples. I don't know if that's possible, but I believe that you, as the governing body, have the authority to amend the ordinance however you choose, alright? It's clear that you don't want this type of sign around town because you passed the ordinances, right, in July of last year, twenty twenty-four, you amended the ordinance to define flashing signs as that. So out of curio, back to the cost issue. Out of curiosity, I submitted a public records request to the city because I was curious what these lawsuits and or pending, or potential lawsuits could be costing the city taxpayers. Again, there's direct costs and indirect costs. You obviously have insurance, PEP, right? It's the liability care for the city. Many of these cases get turned over to them to defend. But I did find from my research that the city, over the last few months, has paid about fourteen thousand dollars in just direct costs to attorney's fees, um, you know, for sign issues, specific to sign issues. I've also submitted a public records request to PEP, uh, going back ten years to see what the city's insurance carriers have paid out for this stuff. That open records request should be back on Friday. So I would encourage you to, you know, uh, to find out what those costs are. I have a feeling it would be well over a hundred thousand dollars. Now, we all know, if we have a bunch of claims on our carriers, what happens? Our rates go up, right? Again, I'm gonna predict that the city's gonna face another lawsuit, uh, from this party that's been recently denied. You know, I'm certain of that, but I would, I would bet my luck on it. So again, out of curiosity, knowing that the legal cases the city could be involved in is public record. Anybody been asked this question? It's all public record. I contacted clerk and master's office for Open County and asked this question. And they provided me with this. Stack of documents related to a current lawsuit that the city's involved in related to portable signs. I don't know if you're aware of it, but it's an ongoing, uh, it's an ongoing case and who knows what the outcome's gonna be, but it's gonna, you know, it's costing the city more than, right? So perhaps you need to clear up, amend, put examples in the ordinance of what you do or don't want in terms of portable signs. If you don't want portable signs on tractor trailers at the bypass or anywhere else, maybe you need to put that in the ordinance, okay? Maybe help, I don't know, I'm not attorney. Again, I'm not advocating for a particular sign or not, I'm here because I'm concerned about the cost that the city's had to expense. And again, I said I think it's in your authority to amend the, the ordinances however you choose. So I don't see what the negative ramifications would be to putting examples in the definitions in the existing ordinances that we already have that, you know, clarify even further, put it black and white. If you read those things like I have and you probably have, there's some, I mean, it's great, I mean, there's, you know, you really have to read it two, three times and maybe think about a, an application, um, but I'll just make it really clear. You've seen examples around town of things that you have denied, the BCA's denied and, uh, the code enforcement officers denied. Put some of those examples in the ordinances, maybe it'll save some money in the road, alright? Thanks. Now, to piggyback what Gene was saying, the courthouse project is, like he said, near completion. There are some delays in some of the lighting issues that we've encountered with up lights and floodlights, et cetera. They're not gonna be here till December, so unfortunately, some of that stuff that's gonna make the courthouse really pretty at night, um, is not gonna be in place until mid-December. Otherwise, it should be finished, so thank you.
You guys done a good job.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kelly. Okay, last thing on the agenda is, um, this resolution that you have before you, um, this resolution, um, it was, this, the, the case had changed in here because of our, um, contractor performance services and we had some delays in getting some approvals, but based on the fact that the resolution was, um, a year ago, it was different leadership, then, um, in order for us to go to the bond fund to fund the performance services, um, project, we had to do another resolution. So this is, this party been passed, it's a repeat, but because of those things, uh, the, um, Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund wanted us to do, uh, pass a, a resolution, um, stating basically the same thing again, but just under the leadership to, uh, be able to, um, have the funding to fund the performance services project, which is the sole project on the, um, raw water intake, um, some energy efficiency to the building, some water leak relief, the project that was contracted, was signed in, uh, June of twenty twenty-four. But it just took a little longer to get all the pieces in play, so, okay? So this, uh, is an issue of resolution, uh, authorizing the incurrence of indebtedness by the town of Livingston, Tennessee, in the principal amount of not to exceed five million dollars by the execution with the public building authority of the city of Clarksville, Tennessee. And I want or more among agreements to provide funding for energy savings projects for the town. And I'm not gonna, I wasn't gonna read the whole resolution, this is, uh, because it's a repeat unless somebody wants me to read more.
Why is it referring to Clarksville?
I don't really understand bonding, but, um.
They're the ones who are issuing the bonds and, uh, basically making us a loan. So municipalities have to issue bonds.
So Clarksville actually be making a loan, that's what he said?
Yes, yes.
I think technically the money is generated from a, a bank, but Clarksville is the conduit of which the bonds will be issued. But this is, um, municipal bond fund exists for the purpose of allowing cities to borrow money from each other so that they can finance public projects. This is done all the time. This is just a very routine thing and this resolution is what the municipal bond fund, um, council requires, so.
And lower is this, the project that has just completed, or not?
It does have some water leak relief involved in it. There were multiple, uh, things, but water leak relief is one of the components.
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you have a motion by Alderman Linder, who had a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Alderman Elder. Is there any more discussion? Okay, if not, uh, let's do a roll call, please.
Alderman Muncher?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderman Riddle?
Yes.
Alderman Elder?
Yes.
Alderman Linder?
Yes.
Motion.
Okay, is there any other business?
Kenneth, I appreciate that you need to do something to pop this thing, like.
Yeah, we've already, we've already passed that one, so, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion, uh, Alderman Linder to adjourn.
I'll say it.
Second by Alderman Riddle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, needing adjourn.
Can't say this out loud. I didn't say what you, uh.